Part of this plan review process because they basically only review plans. They only have a detailed review if the construction is in a wastewater service area, county wastewater service area. So typically, if it's out of a service area, the wastewater division will just approve. Other construction that occurs in a wastewater service area goes through a more complete review. So basically, they look at whether there's new service or an existing service and the type of payment that applies. So according to wastewater division ordinance, we have a water treatment capacity fee or assessment, we have sewer connection charge, and we also check on delinquent sewer fees. Delinquent sewer fees would apply to something that has or a property that has existing service too. And then they also look at sewer connection details within the right of way for new service areas. That basically wraps up the wastewater division's review.
Councilmember Calhoun, follow-up by council chair proposal.
So if you have a property that want to build a separate residence on the property that has sewer, so that requires a separate hookup?
Correct.
And what is the charge for a separate hookup?
I don't have that information right offhand, but we can get that to you.
Is it more than $5,000?
It all depends on the meter size.
Okay, alright. Yeah, what if it's ARU or whatever? That's attached to the house. You know, we're trying to create affordable housing, trying to figure out, you know, advice to give to people when they ask that want to, you know, maybe avoid the new water hookup, the new sewer hookup. So what about that, how does the ARU work for the permit? You're not sure?
That's something that I would have to have.
Okay, follow-up question. Alright, thank you, thank you.
Okay, council chair proposal.
And I don't know if you're the right guy to ask. Criteria for wastewater approval, automatic approvals if you're not within the county sewer service area. So like for me in the House lots, if I wanted to build an ARU in the back or extend my house, right now, I'm under impression and what I've been told is that we cannot get any approvals until we get a septic, a septic system in there. Whose regulation is that?
That would be Department of Health.
Department of Health is requiring a septic be put in now? I thought the deadline was...
That's for any new construction.
Right, that's the Department of Health requirement.
Correct.
So we have them coming up, yeah? Do we have the Department of Health today?
Yes, on a different topic.
Chair. I might be able to shine some light on that for your question because I had a meeting with Department of Health.
Yeah, help me, help me.
I will.
Yeah, only because the law says we got to have a septic by 2050. And yet, we're not allowed to do anything to our property unless we put a septic in now. And I don't know if that's in, I don't see that in the statute.
The sewer conversion process is 2050. And you are allowed to build an ADU or ARU or a new home on that property if it's zoned for it and you put in a new septic system. You cannot add on to the existing dwelling that is hooked up to the cesspool. That dwelling needs to have an upgrade system from a cesspool to a septic. So let's just say, Chair, if you have an acre in Waialua and you have zoned for two houses and a guest cottage called an ADU, and you have your home that has a cesspool, you can't put a new home and/or an ADU with a new septic. But you cannot add on a deck, a bedroom, or an extension to the existing home if you have a cesspool. That existing home would have to have an upgrade conversion to a septic and then you could... That was the meeting, I hope they cleared up. And that was a big confusion for much of the public and that's why I had this meeting. So I'll have Department of Health touch up the... Thank you. Any more follow-up questions on the informational briefing on this topic? Councilmember Calhoun.
So I'm building on the idea of septic. So it says criteria for wastewater approval, automatic approvals not within county sewer service area. So that means automatic approval for putting in a septic system. Is that correct?
If it's not in a service area, wastewater division will just approve. They won't even look at the other requirement.
Okay, and while part of me is happy with that, sometimes I wonder if there's a formula for concentration of density of septic systems. You know, if you have all these leach fields that are right next to each other in a neighborhood, one after another after another, is that a Department of Health question that we would look at, the concentration? Because the leach fields are really a little bit more than a cesspool, right? They don't do a whole lot more. So when we're in these saturated neighborhoods and you keep putting in, you know, ARUs and ADUs and, you know, we have this density of leach fields, I just wonder if there's a look at that.
I believe that's a DOH question.
That'd be a DOH question, alright.
Okay, follow-up question?
The sewer connection details within the county right of way? Just kind of explain that because people are asking.
Okay, so when, let's say a new house is built. It's serviced by the county sewer system. There's a lateral that has to be put in between the house to connect the house to the existing sewer collection line. So that's the connection that wastewater division makes sure is up to standard.
That was one for the public because that was another one that was follow-up.
Now I have a follow-up on yards now, my mind is... So we go in and we build these infrastructure pieces for sewer and primary homes pretty much pay for the infrastructure cost to hook up. Now all of a sudden, we have old family wanting to do an ADU and they're going to hook up to the sewer line. The infrastructure cost already was paid for by the subdivision. Are we still charging that new customer a hookup fee to that sewer line?
I believe every new lateral that's put in, a new hookup, requires a fees.
And those fees are per view to existing fees that were divvied up a long time ago or do we have a concept fee? How do we come up with this fee?
That fee is based on a rate study, the wastewater division does. We went through a rate study with the council, I believe in 2021, where the rate fee was adjusted. But they also look at future costs too, future facility expansions, future capacity needs and those types of things. So that's all factored into the WTCA and sewer connection charge.
Thank you for that, thank you. Any more follow-up questions on this? Okay, thank you very much. Now I'm going to be calling up Planning Division, Kaina Hall.
Chair, members of the council, Kaina Hall, we have the Planning Department. See you a little bit past my... Although we're just going to have a brief discussion and primarily I don't have a slideshow per se, but kind of just go over what planning entails, how our tiered system tracks with the building permit system that Leo and Troy run over. So as Leo folks presented on the fact that they have their building permit and there are various agencies that are signatories to that building permit, Water Department, Fire Department, Department of Health, Engineering, so on and so forth. Planning Department is one of those signatory agencies to a building permit. And essentially, while all the other agencies are looking at either safety and health concerns or infrastructure concerns, we're looking to make sure that the building permit aligns with the zoning permit that they have or need to apply for. So there are technically two permit processes within the county of Kauai's construction purview, if you will. The building permit that most people are very familiar with and attached to that is the zoning permit. Now, while the building permit is primarily again focused on safety and health, whether or not that building is going to not fall down on you and infrastructure aspects, having adequate water, sewer, or septic systems, and so on and so forth, the zoning permit process is slightly different and that's why we have a separate permit for it. Planning is primarily concerned with two areas of review. One is going to be the form and character, the design regulations of what we want our built environment to look like. What are the heights going to be? What are the setbacks going to be? Not setbacks per se for fire purposes, but just for again, form and character. What are the lock coverage of impermeable surfaces? Again, not for drainage purposes per se, the engineering is going to be reviewing, but again, from a form and character standpoint, we have those thresholds set within our comprehensive zoning ordinance. The second tier of the planning review is going to be the use, which is why you have in much of Kauai, Euclidean zoning where you have residential districts here, commercial districts here, industrial districts here, that denote what type of uses can occur and what intensity, i.e. how much commercial activity, what types of commercial activity can occur in a neighborhood commercial district versus a general commercial district. The general commercial district having a bit more intense commercial type uses. And within the residential district, a density factor of 1 through 40, R1 through R40, that number denoting how many dwelling units per acre the respective property can qualify. R1 being one dwelling unit per acre, R10 being 10 units per acre, R40 being 40 units per acre, and so on and so forth. There's a small third side part of zoning that has happened over the past decade that is somewhat outside of form and character per se and outside of use and has to do with coastal and climate resiliency. You have the shoreline setback ordinance that is within the zoning process ensuring that the structure being proposed will neither impact or be impacted by coastal erosion processes as well as the sea level rise ordinance that necessitates those structures that will be subject to sea level rise flooding, passive flooding, highway runoff, elevate those structures to be able to accommodate that water that's going to occur in the next 40 to 70 years. And so that in a nutshell is what we look at when we're looking at zoning permits. For zoning purposes, we really don't have to have a full-blown architectural stamp. You definitely need that right for the building, for much of the building permit proposals because of the safety and health regulations. But from our standpoint, really, our permit can be hand-drawn on graph paper as long as it's to scale, that is acceptable for us. And then, you know, when an applicant comes in to apply for the zoning permit, there's two tracks within that. One is the ministerial zoning permit, which is the over-the-counter permit. Your single-family dwellings, your sheds, your fences, et cetera. Your discretionary permit is the other track. And that's the much larger scale proposals, your shopping centers, your more than 50 multifamily unit apartment complexes, your schools, if you will. Those are going to go through the Planning Commission and the commissioner will view this higher intensified proposal primarily around whether or not it's going to be compatible with the surrounding environment, the surrounding neighborhood, those that frequent the area, and so on and so forth. I think for the purpose of this discussion, councilmember, because you're probably looking for me to describe a bit more in the ministerial realm, which is that over-the-counter permit process. And so the over-the-counter permit process is really the front counter of the Planning Department and the interface of much of the public with planning is when an applicant comes in, wants to even see what they can do with their property, before even the permit is applied for. The most common inquiry is, what is my property's own and what can I do with it? And so that's just figuring out what their zoning designation is and what permissible use is and then what the design standards are in there. Recently, we did just put all of our zoning maps through a digital layers on GIS online. So that has actually reduced a lot of front counter time because people just can pull up their properties like that with a TMK and figure out what their zoning is. But once they have their zoning and they want to apply for say a shed or a guest house or an ARU, then they essentially, generally it will be spun up through the building permit process first because they're going to submit those plans. And then when we get on our side, our team as signatories will make sure that those proposals, those structures are in conformance with our design standards or use standards, if you will. Aside from that, we've got a relatively low fee compared to the rest of the agencies. Our over-the-counter permit fee is, class one is $30. So it's relatively small and again, we don't need the architectural stamp per se. But because most of these are going to have to go through for a full-blown building permit, most of these are going to require an architectural stamp. That's us in a nutshell. I probably can do a little bit better if you guys have questions or concerns.
Any follow-up questions, Councilmember Calhoun?
So when you talked about regional design standards, is there any consideration for areas of high water saturation on steep hillsides or in nearshore areas? In the 2018 flood, we just saw such profound challenges with that. So when you have an adjacent neighbor who puts in a monster house on uphill from you on slab and grade, it's pretty much over for your home, right?
Yeah, and again, like I was saying, the planning department's realm is for the most part in form and character. We have been getting into over the past decade, like I said, some of the resiliency issues as far as shoreline setback and the viability of constructing in this zone. There definitely is cause for concern for construction on slope and particular slope stability. Currently, the Planning Department doesn't have anything within our regulatory purview that addresses that. I'm not sure if, a bit more is in the engineering realm, but how much that goes into saturation points and whatnot? I wouldn't be able to answer that.
Okay, it sounds like we don't, that's a gap maybe. It doesn't sound like engineering is dealing with that or is planning or public works. It seems like, where would you see the right place? Especially when I'm talking about these saturations of the leach fields? What we're seeing too, when we have more and more leach fields in saturated areas or along the beach, the shoreline, because we have the density?
Are you making a point or are you...
I'm asking a question.
Were you making a point or...
Let me ask my question, please.
Ask your question.
I am, I'm asking my question. I have to make it clear so he understands. We are having density increases. So when either we have high surf or when we have high rain, these leach fields are coming down and we're seeing an increase in septic and sewage in the water, in the rivers and in the ocean. So Department of Health, that seems like that's downstream of solving the problem literally and figuratively. So it's in planning because it's upstream of even engineering. So when we lay out our pieces, it doesn't seem like there's any difference whether we're on flat land, flat dry land, or saturated hillsides or shoreline.
So there's two different issues going on. The shoreline aspect, there definitely is a strong regulatory review side from the Planning Department. From a slope standpoint, I know there are engineering standards with slope stability and construction on there. I couldn't go over them. Troy might be able to, that might actually be more in Michael Moll's purview. But, you know, I'm not averse to saying perhaps more needs to be done. I think there would have to be two approaches to that. From a very technical engineering standpoint, I'm not going to point at my... Troy would be like, Troy's got to take it. But from a technical standpoint, whether it's an engineering approach, that's kind of where that would be housed. On the flip side, not being averse to more responsibilities, the way that the Planning Department took on the shoreline setback ordinance, which arguably, one might say, no, that should be in engineering as well because they're dealing with flood standards and whatnot. We had no problems taking it on because of studies that were done for the entire coastline for Kauai as a region in and of itself that has a particular hazard. And when the study was done scientifically to establish scientifically derived coastal erosion rates that fed into a formula that non-engineers like myself and our planners could apply from a regulatory framework. So to answer your question, Councilmember, that could possibly be done in two matters. One, from an engineering standpoint or from a study formulaic standpoint for the planners. But it would be one or the other, I think, just thinking aloud.
So I recognize that these...
And he answered your question.
I have another question, yes I do. I have another question, can I ask it?
Ask the question.
So when we are looking at evacuation routes and how that is a part of planning, we have evacuation route issues and so you guys are stuck with our policy that asks for increased density, you guys are caught in the middle of this. But how are we working, moving forward relative to evacuation routes since we're looking at this concentration happening in places like the House lots, Hanapepe Homes, you know, Heights, there's a number of places. Poipu on Kiuhuna Plantation Road, we're having this increase in density and all the inherent problems. How is planning, looking at that, I'm asking for how you might need help from us?
No, no, it's a good question. And, you know, evacuation routes have been a long-stayed discussion on the North Shore and particularly Hanalee and northward, right? With the threat of tsunami and the limited access they have in and out of that area. And I can definitely say, you know, in the shadow of Lahaina, now has become very much a discussion in looking at all of our town cores and areas of population. That is something that we are currently working with, both the Fire Department as well as KEMA, to look at how from an emergency management planning standpoint. I mean, from a multimodal standpoint, planners are always like, more access is better, right? Like, we say it all the time, but the cost of that access for say just multimodal purposes, there may not necessarily be the will to fully get behind and fund that. But when we're talking about serious threats to safety with emergencies, such as tsunamis, such as fires, then, you know, we recognize that there is a bit more will, if you will, to go down that path. And we don't have an answer right now, but we definitely are pursuing the strategies for it.
If you have any ideas, I'm happy to work with you on it.
Thank you.
Any more questions for planning? I had a question.
Yes, sir.
When you're doing the planning design certain old neighborhoods with the lack of the 40-foot road that goes in and out, which is a standard size to bring subdivisions or housing development in and out, are we still making exceptions for density in areas that do not have that 40-foot road that goes in and out?
It's a bit more of an engineering question in how they manage the roads and improvements made there. I can say from a planning perspective, we've done some work in the older plantation camps here in Kauai, both in Kamakani and recently in Numila, and recognizing that those roads very much are substandard county roads, but function extremely efficiently within the context of what a neighborhood road should do in the fact that the way they're set up, people drive in Kamakani camp, right, at like five miles an hour. Kapuna and children feel safe walking on that road and the drivers have no problem sharing that road. Given the narrowness, the proximity of the houses, it works from a design standpoint. And I've had numerous conversations with the Engineering Division chief on aspects of looking at substandard county roads to serve these smaller types of neighborhoods. And they've already signed off in looking at places like Kamakani and Numila that we can absolutely accept substandard roads. How we set that up for the possibility of future developments so that future housing areas can take advantage of what are cheaper, but albeit in many circumstances, a much more efficiently designed substandard county road? That is in the works as we speak, councilmember.
Thank you. Alright, thank you very much.
Thank you.
I would like to call up Department of Water.
Thank you, Chair. Council chair, proposal committee chair, DuCosta, former mayor, Pervail. Council members and finally, most importantly, your staff. They are a pleasure to work with on a day-to-day basis. I have yet to find a situation where they have not been helpful to myself personally. So thank you. Just a couple of quick comments.
Can you please take your seat?
Yes, I can. Joe Tate, manager of the Water Department, with me today. Our two familiar faces who you all know, Michael Hinizumi, my deputy manager, and Jason Kagimoto, who runs our Engineering Division. We have a simple strategy as far as our permitting process is concerned and that is deliver to the customer what they expect us to deliver in an educational, timely, and most cost-effective way. Anything beyond that is really just back and forth between the engineering staff and the owner, developer, contractor, builder, architect, whoever comes to the counter. It's our job to serve them the best way we can because they pay our salaries. I'm going to turn the time over to Jason, who owns the permit process at the Department of Water. It's Michael and my job to provide whatever support Jason needs to deliver that process the way I described it. So Jason's the owner and I take responsibility for success or failure. If we fail, I have not provided Jason the support and his staff that they need. So Jason, it's all yours.
Yes, I guess for the building permit process, yeah, there's sort of like, I guess, two major lumps, I guess, that the permits fall under. So it's for us, it's residential versus commercial. So each different type of permit has different types of requirements that we look for. So I think historically, it has been very confusing to figure out, you know, what the Water Department is looking for, which then leads, you know, to frustration on the customer side. So we've been evaluating the process, I guess, over the last several years. We've recently put together a flow chart for the different building permit applications based on your zoning. They've been put on our, I think, I'm pretty sure they've been posted on our Facebook, but they've also been put on our website. So on the top banner, you'll see there's like a forms and applications. And on the top of that page, there'll be basically breakdowns. So there are different flow charts for different types of, whether it's residential and then the type of building permit you're looking for. For instance, like if it's a single-family, guest house, those kinds of things, swimming pools, and then if it's on the commercial side. So basically, the idea of that is to provide a little bit more guidance. One of the things we've been noticing is that... So pretty much, I guess, when building permits come in, there are times where the plans are already drawn up and that's why, I mean, it's in the building permit system, but there are times where we haven't sort of reviewed to say that we would actually approve it. So I think for us, the biggest thing we've been trying to put out there in terms of messaging, which is on our flow charts, is that actually, one of the first things that people should do is submit a water clearance form. So those are also on our website. But that basically is the assurance for the customer that we will be able to provide the water service for the application. So for instance, we have areas that have water meter restrictions. We have other kind of things like that that come up. So there are times where if that water clearance form isn't submitted prior to moving ahead with the project and then the plans, there is a scenario, and an unfortunate one, that we wouldn't be able to approve the building permit and it's not like an easy addressing certain comments. It's like if the facilities, if our facility is operating capacity, we wouldn't be able to approve it. So I guess the biggest message I would say for us is for all the customers to be able to submit that water clearance form first and then we will respond formally and as long as we can support it, we will respond with a conditional approval letter providing the requirements. And then if the, as long as the customer can meet those requirements then we'll approve the building permit.
Are you guys done?
Yep.
I'm going to open it up for questions to my councilmembers. Anybody have a question for water?
I do.
Okay, good.
In the building permit process, is there any question or piece of review that looks for fire flow protection?
Yes.
So they have to be able to show that they are within how many meters of say, or feet from yards from a hydrant or a standpipe?
Yes, correct. So for us, I guess it kind of depends on the type of review it is. So for commercial, yeah, we check for those based on zoning. For residential, that, I guess, check for fire flow is, becomes applicable for the third dwelling. So if it's the first or second dwelling for, I guess, a lot of record, so... So if it's the first or second dwelling for, I guess, a lot of record, so it doesn't look at individual CPRs as, as their own. So for instance, like if you had a three CPR unit, and there's, you're looking at putting one home on each individual, it would trigger the fire flow. Or if you have a single property that has a third dwelling on it, it would trigger the fire flow for residential.
So that would include the additional dwelling units and additional rental units? It'd be the third piece that would look for the, the fire flow potential? And when we're looking at the fire flow potential, do you have in your records, like the pounds per, what do you have to say, pounds per gallon?
Yes, all of that's in our standards.
That's all in the standards, okay. All right, that is one of my biggest questions, because I know it's lacking, and it's, it's lacking for generations. It's not your fault, but it seems to me another very big issue that we're going to need to be addressing. How, how far are we away from looking at assessing our fire flow protection in these missing areas?
So we're, we're currently in, in our long-range plan. It's called the Water System and Investments Plan. It is our twenty-year, long-term planning. We, that project, I guess, will be providing an updated CIP list. So one of the things that we'll be evaluating in relation to that is, so we've, that project has updated our GIS system. It includes doing a hydraulic model to be able to assess our system. So one of the things that we are assessing or prioritizing is, is fire flow. So there will be projects that will come out based on the assessment of our hydraulic model.
And so that falls after the approval of the Kawai Water Use and Development Plan?
Um, they're like parallel things, so...
They're parallel.
Yeah, so the Water Use and Development Plan is more so water use based on zoning. And then that is sort of just looking at like the overall, in a way, like supply and demand for the island. That includes surface water, you know, other things outside of, in addition to the county water system. But this Water System and Investment Plan is specifically for our water systems.
And I know that's up before Sea Worm on December eighteenth. Did we get the Waiahe Surface Water Treatment Plant in, updated into our Kawai Water Use and Development Plan? Do you think that made it in there?
Yes, so we're going to be going to provide a briefing or update for our Water Use and Development Plan on the nineteenth, December nineteenth.
Nineteenth, okay. Thank you.
New question or follow-up?
New.
I, I have a follow-up.
Go ahead.
I have a follow-up when you talk about fire prevention. Well, thank you for bringing it up, Councilor Norekouli. You told me, Mr. Kagimoto, that you guys can deny a permit if the standpipe or the fire hydrant doesn't have enough flow to prevent that house from burning or put out a fire, am I correct? You guys have that purview?
Correct, so for the new permits that come in, yes.
Do you guys make exceptions for an area that would be willing to put in their own water tank, do a rain catchment, and have water to fight the fire on their home? If you guys feel that you don't have enough pressure from your standpipe or from your fire hydrant in that area, but the homeowner is willing to put a tank in to fight their own fire, would you guys approve that?
I guess we would evaluate it, but I mean, I, I think in terms of the water storage you're looking for, I mean, I would assume it would be a pretty costly project.
Yeah, so I'm letting you know, because you're pretty new, how, how long are you in the Water Department?
About two and a half years.
Correct. So Lawai, there's a subdivision behind the Maturari that has a water tank, and there was not enough sufficient pressure from their fire hydrant standpipe. So our county allowed that subdivision to be put in, and they have that water tank. So I'm just asking now, is the Water Department still practicing that same process that we allowed generations or decades ago to still be in place today?
I would assume so.
Okay, thank you for answering. Any new questions, Councilor Norekouli?
Yeah, so you mentioned submit water clearance form first.
Correct.
So the water clearance form is just a simple, one-page document that they're inquiring, is water even available in this area?
Yeah, I mean, so basically, I guess, the, the premise behind it is, so there is, the information we're looking for is, so, you know, what is the TMK, what is it zoned for, is there existing water service? What are you looking to build? So that way, we basically can be able to evaluate, you know, existing versus what future needs are, and confirm that we can support that.
So not, not only the thing about future needs, but you're able to tell them to, if it's not available now, but we're planning for that to happen in the future, and when?
Um...
Water becoming available?
I, I guess, so I guess the actual response would be, we wouldn't provide a, we would reject the, I guess, request.
Available now or...
But, but yeah, we, we would be able to provide, I guess, some level of, I mean, I guess, you know, we do have these planning documents that'll provide, you know, I guess, a projected timeline, but most of these projects don't have like a specific, unnecessary construction timeline of when the facilities meet.
Because I was thinking too, along the lines when Kaina was talking about all the GIS and the mapping, and how the public can go and look for themselves. So the public cannot go to your website and look for themselves where water is available now and where it might be available in the next couple of years, the next five years, next ten years.
Uh, not in a mapping, I mean, I guess, if, if the question is related to existing service areas, we do have a table that identifies areas where we have restrictions. As far as servicing new areas that are, aren't currently served, it may be addressed within our long-range plan, but at the current time, there aren't any like concrete plans to expand beyond our, outside of our existing service areas. I mean, right now, basically, our, our goal is to be able to address our existing facilities and, you know, make sure that they're reliable and have the proper redundancies.
Vice Chair, thank you. I will assure the council and this committee that we are not waiting to provide those areas where, as a result of initial findings of our water investment plan, we have calculated where there may be acceptable amounts of water in a certain area where historically, we have considered those areas as gaps. But until we started this water investment plan, the hydraulic model, our GIS linked with that, we are finding out along the way where we have deficiencies, where we can fill deficiencies. So in the process Jason described, we have approved projects, whether it was a school expansion or other areas where we have been able to approve those projects simply based on the early findings of that plan. So we're not waiting until we're finished to bless someone else because they've been waiting, some of these folks have been waiting for years. But as soon as we find out that we have available areas to serve, we're going to serve them. The challenge for us is, when we start serving those previously unserved areas, the line forms. And that line then eventually ends up, oh, we're not there yet. We haven't found that much water yet, enough for the first maybe one or two, but then the line starts again. So we're being very cautious about just saying, yep, we're going to approve everybody because we haven't gotten there yet. The other, the other part of that that you need to know with the investment plan is the department has not addressed water rates in almost ten years. So those water rates actually help us extend the system throughout the island. So without that revenue, we've been stuck where we are. So the investment plan and the rates telling us how we pay for the infrastructure are coming hand in glove. And that was the whole strategy when the three of us started working together, was how do we close these gaps for people who have been waiting for a long time? And where do we find the money?
I have a follow-up.
Thank you, thank you, sir.
And I have a follow-up as well.
Would you like to go before me or after me?
Up to you.
Oh, since I'm up, I had it on my brain, I don't want to lose it. Thank you, Councilor Norekouli. Mr. Kagimoto, you said need and availability, and that's whether you guys sign off on the permit, approving it or disapproving it?
Yeah, I mean, it's, I guess, sort of related, it's more so related to the water clearance form, but yes, without a water, approved water clearance form.
Thank you, put it simple, yes or no question? So if you tell the builder, residential person, that you guys don't have water to accommodate his or her home, but they're not interested in your water because they live in an area where there's rainfall, Kapahi, Lawai, we have some really wet areas, and they want to do a rain catchment, but you guys have potable water in that area, just not enough to service any more new people because your infrastructure, your, your tank is not big enough. Do you guys have the purview to deny that permit if that person would like to do rain catchment and build a home off of county water?
I mean, I guess we haven't fully addressed the rainwater catchment, but as far as whether or not they can, if they can't connect to our system because we don't have the capacity, we haven't been denying those permits.
Answer me this question, just yes or no. Do the Water Department have the purview or the authority to deny a permit from a homeowner that would like to build in an area that you guys cannot sufficiently supply water because of your infrastructure, tank, whatever's going on, but they would catch their own rainwater to supply their own house? Do you guys have the authority to say no to that person?
I, I, I'll just jump in here, and I'm not speaking for our county attorney because he's probably got a better answer than I would. We are pro ADU/RDU development. We are pro helping landowners achieve their objectives. How that factors into catchment is a new focus for us. I think between Michael and I, who have been looking at other islands and how they handle catchment, some islands in some parts of that island are completely dependent on catchment. They do not have any, a system anywhere near them, so they have allowed catchment. That is not the Water Department, that is through the Housing Department. So it's a separate process, not related to us on that island. It goes through the housing process as part of the residential permit process. So if water is not involved, and someone proposes on that island a piece of, or a, a structure, a development on a piece of undeveloped property where there is not even a chance of being served, it's decades away from being served, if ever. They allow catchment with a formal process, but not through the Water Department, through the council and the Housing Department.
So my question is, because Mr. Hinazumi answered this question on the record months ago when we had our briefing on rain catchment. He knows his answer. I'm going to ask you. If somebody comes in from Lawai or Kapahi, you cannot service that area because you have not enough pressure. This person supplies, puts in a permit to build a home, and they would like to go rain catchment. Would you guys see it fit to let that permit go through your signature, or would you guys deny it for them?
Michael Hinazumi, for the record, as previously stated, at the present time, our rules don't allow us to do private water systems within the area serviced by the county water system. So the answer would be no.
Correct. But, hang on, go quickly. But on record, you told us you guys didn't have that authority to make the decision because that person who's applying for the permit does not need your services. How can you guys make a judgment call on something that somebody doesn't need your service?
I don't believe we're making a judgment call. I believe Michael's comments was based on the existing rules. If you must have mistaken.
We don't have, we don't have rules for catchment.
Correct, so if we don't have rules for catchment, then you guys cannot make a decision on the catchment. That's how I see it.
Thank you, that's pretty much what I was going to ask. Does the rules prohibit, or is it just silent?
It's silent.
Yeah, so there, there is no prohibition?
Correct. I apologize.
No, no, don't apologize, the lawyer is over there, I'm just, I, because when you said that the current laws don't allow it, that's, that's different than it's silent.
Sorry, our current rules are silent on catchment, but the...
So there is no explicit prohibition?
Correct, no explicit.
I think we're all talking the same thing, it's just how we describe it.
Yeah, I think maybe, thank you.
I, I have a follow-up.
She was first.
So on, on the Jan, the eleven-sixteen Board of Water meeting, and I really appreciate being there, I learned so much. A comment was made relative to these water catchment systems that we would need to hire a bunch more people to be able to do inspections. Can, did I hear that correctly? I believe it was you who said it, so can you explain that?
Yeah, I think the question referenced if we were responsible for catchment, because we're not. So the, so the issue would be if, and, and again, I defer to legal, but if the water board were to decide, okay, we'll, we'll become involved now in catchment. That's one issue. If they choose to follow the other islands and say, we're not involved in catchment, that's really a county, or a council, or a housing department. We would not have, we would not be hiring staff to do anything.
Okay, because I just, that came up when the resolution was brought forward. And then also, because I have Hyanna, Hanalei Community Association in the room here, I have a question on this, there's a question. But I appreciated that it was noted that Kiluea's got a one...
This is a new question, because he had a follow-up.
Mine's a follow-up on Keepukai's question. Keepukai, you, you, you took Keepukai's question, you turned it into water catchment, but we...
I haven't asked a question in a while.
I know, because we went off, okay?
Let Keepukai go, and then you can ask your new question.
Okay, I will ask my follow-up to Keepukai's question after Keepukai's question. I had the follow-up that you were going to go first, then it was made.
I'm running this meeting, you will have your turn. Councilor Keepukai, your turn, go ahead.
So, you know, when you talked about no rules, and so basically, there's no prohibition, but also there's no allowance, correct? You're, when somebody comes to you for your sign-off, they're asking you to sign off according to what you have in place. So you don't sign off. So that is a no. So it's not the same thing legally, but until, and I suppose, does this body then, or is it your commission then, can make the new rule?
Yes, we, we approve the building permits or sign off on the building permits based on the counties of, of Department of Water's ability to provide water service, source, storage, or transmission.
So you don't have the mechanism to allow the catchment instead of that? So you have no other choice but during this building permit process to say, no, we, we won't sign off?
Yes.
So it'll take creating a process, or instead of, you can do this instead of that. And does that have to be done by this council, or does your water commission do that?
And that is the proposal that we are presenting to the board to have them review information regarding allowance of catchment, based on the reservation.
Okay, I think there's probably strong support for that. So if you need any support from me or any of us, let us know.
Okay, thank you. My follow-up to Keepukai's earlier question, which was about the line of people waiting for signup. My understanding from that eleven-sixteen meeting that Kiluea is in line for a one-million-gallon storage tank, and Hyanna, a two-million-gallon storage tank, and Vekke Road has got their permits approved for the pipe to go down Vekke Road to add greater water supply. Is that, do I, did I write my notes correctly?
So Kiluea has, we are currently in design for a one-million-gallon tank. Our tentative, I guess, bidding out is probably about a year from now for construction.
Okay.
Hyanna is a two-hundred-thousand-gallon tank.
Oh, two-hundred thousand.
And tentatively, that will probably be about a year from now also, to bid that out. And then the Vekke Road project, yes, it is to increase it for fire flow purposes, and we're looking to bid that out within, within the next month.
Okay, so then, when we bid it out, when do people anticipate? If it's starting that in the next month, when would it probably go in the ground?
Construction will probably be finished in, I would guess, in about like two years, probably. We'd have to, or three? Yeah, I mean, basically... Um, we'd have to, or three. Yeah, I mean, basically the, the next steps would be bidding it out, which is a several month process. Contracting with the contractor and then they have to submit their submittals for the, to, uh, us to prove the materials that they'll be using. And then they have to order them through the construction work and whatnot. So yeah, that, if there is a several year process.
So would a new house be able to be built between then and now or would it wait until that's done?
Um, I guess for that area, it, it kind of depends on what, what street and what facilities are serving that.
Okay. And then for Kilauea, when we have that one million gallon tank, um, in a twenty twenty five start, did I just hear you correct on that one? Uh, you're bidding it out soon and so will that be enough water for that fifty acres that we're wanting to put the housing on for the county and for the school that just got approved at planning yesterday?
I guess we're, we're hopeful. I mean, we do have our hydraulic model that we're, you know, we recently, I guess it's still a work in progress. But you know, we've been able to do some preliminary evaluations and so I guess we'll need to kind of like get that finalized to confirm.
So if I'm understanding that correct, that might mean you're hoping that there was water when you did drill the well, but it could come up dry.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Any more questions? I do have two. I would like you guys to address the meter size. I'm gonna give you three meter sizes. Could you guys please tell me what each of those meter sizes relate to? We have five eighths meter, three fourths meter, and a one inch meter. Tell me, what is the responsibility of service of each of those sizes of meters? Five eighths first.
I, I guess I'm confused on your question. So I mean, there, are you talking about residential, commercial?
Residential cannot have a five eighths meter.
So it depends on the fixture units.
Residential has a five eighths meter. Can you tell me how many homes can a residential five eighths meter service?
One.
Okay. Does that home have to have a certain amount of bedrooms or bathrooms assigned to the five eighths meter?
So currently, no. It's just a single family home.
Okay, perfect. Okay. What about your three fourths meter? When would you guys recommend a three fourths meter?
Two dwellings.
Two dwellings would have a three fourths meter.
Two dwellings with a kitchen, each.
Last, one inch meter. Do you guys put that in any kind of residential subdivision?
Generally, no.
What is one inch meter used for?
Uh, it all depends on the water demand from the homeowner, homeowners or dwelling dwellings on the property.
So in Kukui'ula, those massive homes, what size meter are you guys recommending them to put in?
So if it's one home, it's a five eight inch meter.
Okay. So can I give you a scenario and can you answer me this question? Local resident upstairs, downstairs, on the one roof. He has a five eighths meter. He wants to enclose his downstairs. Are you guys mandating that he change his five eighths meter to a three fourths meter and/or put in a new meter to service underneath of the house?
So as long as that dwelling still only has one kitchen, then we, a five eight inch would be sufficient.
So you're telling me that if he put a downstairs kitchen on the one roof, he would have to upgrade his meter?
Yeah, because then it's two, it's two dwellings. You can only have per planning, you can only have one kitchen per dwelling.
How much water does that kitchen use versus a mansion home in Kukui'ula who has five bathrooms? How does that kitchen use any more water than the mansion home in Kukui'ula that you guys only recommend a five eighths meter?
So I guess that's just like the way we currently evaluate it. I mean, I guess there's not necessarily all perfect systems on how to evaluate it, but so we are possibly looking in this rate study, um, long-term range plan as far as do we evaluate homes per fixture unit? So right now, the, to sort of, I guess, not, uh, make the process very complicated is so, that's why for residential. Whether it's a tiny home or mansion, currently the rule, currently we basically say if one dwelling will have a five eight inch meter. We understand that, you know, yeah, the water usage isn't the same in those kinds of things. So there is a possibility that would evaluate to then it would be more akin to how the commercial side is, is actually based on fixture units. So the bigger the business, the more fixtures you have, the bigger the water meter. But yes, there would be ramifications in terms of the cost.
Local family who builds a three bedroom and has a five eighths meter versus that mansion, five thousand square foot home in Kukui'ula. They pay the same price for that five eighths meter?
Correct.
Last question. What is the upgrade cost to go from a five eighths meter to a three fourths meter? If you want to put a downstairs kitchen for your son or daughter to come back from college and they would like to live underneath your room? What is the cost to upgrade that meter?
So I think if it's a attached dwelling, I think it would be an additional seven thousand.
So seven thousand dollars. Tell me what, what is in place for that seven thousand dollars to be allocated? What are you guys doing to that meter to generate that kind of cost? That's a lot of money. That downstairs room might not even cost seven thousand dollars if the homeowner does it himself.
Yeah, I mean, I guess, I think we're talking about apples and oranges, um, but so like one of the options is you would just, if it's the same family, then you would just keep, keep with that one kitchen and it wouldn't cost any, any, um, more, right? So the additional cost in the meter size is because you're having an additional dwelling. And that allows for additional uses of the, the dwelling, um, versus it just being one single family home.
Yo, I'm asking you, Mr. Kagimoto, what is your cost allocation? What is the cost of a five eighths meter that you purchased versus a three fourths? And what is your material and labor cost to put that three fourths meter in to have a seven thousand dollar fee? It's not apples and oranges. We're talking only apples. You got water, meter, and cost.
So the meter cost is, it's based on the FRC or the Facility Reserves chart. It's not based on the cost to, to do the installation work or the difference in the labor or the material. It's based on the overall service of additional dwelling.
Any more questions for our water department?
Thank you very much.
Welcome.
Thank you very much.
Oh, actually, I have one for Joe. Is there anything you want to add?
Uh, I would just add, Jason and Michael both touched on it, but I would just add that as, uh, Committee Chair DeCosta just discussed and asked questions. Some of these questions that have been longstanding and I'll use former Mayor Carvalho's tenure, go way back before his tenure. Uh, and those questions revolve around our rates and how do we offset, as Committee Chair DeCosta just asked. This big separation and differential between size of meters versus, as Jason said, in the water, in the water investment plan, we're not just looking at, oh, we're gonna raise rates. We're looking at the FRC. Maybe we're no longer doing the FRC or implementing the FRC the way we are. Maybe there's a, an approach with faucets and fixtures where you brought up a couple of times, uh, Mr. DeCosta, you brought up a couple of times the size of homes in Kukui'ula, right? Some of those homes may have twelve faucets and fixtures depending on bathrooms, uh, showers, sink, kitchens upstairs, downstairs, all of those things that were not considered when whoever made the rule way, way back made the rules, that is all now open for discussion with us as to what's the best way to implement that new plan. Because if we're going to spread the wealth on the island with new facilities, new pipelines, new tanks, new reservoirs, all of that stuff. Somebody's gotta pay for it. Right now, we are in one structure. That's FRC, right? Here's, here's the rates and here's the FRC. This is gonna give us an option amongst the smarter people than me. Okay, how should we be implementing this to cover all of these scenarios? It may not cover them all. Like, at the end of the day, water may not be involved in catchment. Cause we're not involved in that for a couple of reasons. One, we don't regulate it. We don't regulate the quality of water in those tanks. So is that's health department gonna do that or who's gonna do that or is no one gonna do that because it's not regulated? That has to be decided by the board. That will impact, as Councilwoman Belishka said, that'll affect our staff. Are we gonna be doing this now instead of this? That has to all go into that planning because it's my responsibility to come to the board and say, here's how much money we need depending on which scenarios you want us to handle. Cause right now it's a guess. Until we come out with a plan that says, we are recommending this for rates, this for faucets and fixtures, or no, not faucets and fixtures, we're gonna stick with FRC. Until we have those questions answered, we can't come up with a recommendation.
Thank you very much for that.
Sorry to be so long-winded.
Yep, that was helpful.
I would like to call up Department of Health Waste Water Branch.
Good morning. This is the College of Councilmembers and ladies and gentlemen. Do you want me to start again?
But you need to state your name.
Yeah, my name is Mark Tomomitsu of the Department of Health Waste Water Branch Oahu Office. Originally, the committee asked Lori Vetter, our Waste Water Branch Kauai engineer, to attend. But unfortunately, she has prior commitments and so I'm here to represent the Department of Health Waste Water Branch. So I don't have slides, but, um, I, I made some handouts, only five copies. So I was guessing, so somebody ought to share. It's, it's, um, you know, really basic, um, information. There's primarily two parts. One, I wanted to go over our residential building permit application review by the Department of Health Waste Water Branch. And the other part going over some of the notable Hawaii administrative rules that we follow for the implementation of the wastewater system review. So, um, to start off, I'd like to, um, go over how the residential building permit application is reviewed by the Department of Health Waste Water Branch. So basically, we view residential building permits in two types of, two types of, um, applications for new, new dwellings or an application for existing dwellings which involves alteration or modification. I just want to point out, I believe when, say, an application is submitted, if it's determined that the property is gonna be serviced by the county sewer, then we won't even see it. It won't be routed to us. If it's not serviced by the county sewer, then I believe it's routed to us for review.
Routed, you said routed?
In terms of E-Plan, in regards to the county envi- environmental, electronic planning, um, review process. So, um, so when, say, a new dwelling is submitted, new application for, uh, a new dwelling is submitted to us, we would check if an individual wastewater system application was submitted for the project. Uh, which you point, you were asking about separate filing fees. So we have a filing fee for the individual wastewater system application, which is a hundred dollars. And it's a per, separate permitting process for the wastewater system. So we would review the individual wastewater system application in conformance with our administrative rules. H R, chapter eleven sixty-two wastewater system, to make sure it complies with that requirement, our applicable requirements. And one of the main things we would check is the floor plan for the project matches the building permit application floor plan. If everything's okay, we would approve to construct an individual wastewater system. And then we would, um, approve the building permit for the new dwelling. If for a situation where it's an existing dwelling involving alteration or addition, uh, we would check our records to see the, what kind of individual wastewater system uh, has been approved for the existing dwelling. And if the system is determined to be able to accommodate the alteration or addition for the existing dwelling, then we will approve the building permit. If the determination is that the individual wastewater system is not sufficient to accommodate the proposed alteration or addition, then we would comment in the E-Plans about that, whatever the situation is. One thing I want to point out is in regards to bedrooms. Our rules for individual wastewater systems is, can only, uh, let me start again. Our, our rules for the individual wastewater systems is that the dwelling can have no more than five bedrooms. Or there can be a combination of two dwellings to the system, to the individual wastewater system of no more than five bedrooms. And so in terms of what's considered a dwelling, I believe, um, the water department kind of, kind of touched upon it too. If there's a kitchen, that pretty much one of the foundation in regards to what's considered a dwelling, that's a separate dwelling. Okay. The next part I want to go over is, um, in regards to, say, individual wastewater systems uh, versus private wastewater treatment works. So if you have a project, um, and it's involving, say, if no more than five bedrooms and say no more than two bedroom, two dwellings connected to the wastewater system, then we can approve the individual wastewater system. If the project involves more than five bedrooms or more than two dwellings with a total of five bedrooms, then we would require a private wastewater treatment works for, for the development. So, um, I'd like to kind of go over some of the notable administrative rules that we use for the implementation of the individual wastewater system. So we follow Hawaii administrative rules, chapter eleven sixty-two entitled wastewater system. And in the preamble, it reads, "The Department of Health shall seek to ensure the use and the dispose of wastewater and wastewater sludge and to not contaminate or pollute any valuable water resources, does not give rise to public nuisance, and does not become a hazard or potential hazard to the public health, safety, and welfare." And so that's just a description of what the rule is trying to accomplish. One of the things I want to point out is our definition for bedrooms. A bedroom is considered any room within a dwelling that is or might reasonably be used as a sleeping room. A room is presumed to be a bedroom if it has superficial floor area not less than seventy-five square feet, seventy-two square feet. Excuse me, seventy square feet and is provided with, with windows or skylight with an area of not less than ten percent of the floor area of the, uh, whichever, um, let me repeat that. Or skylight width and area of not less than one tenth of the floor area or ten square feet, whichever is greater. So the reason why I'm mentioning that is in regards to our definition of a bedroom, it's not a situation where because a room doesn't have a closet, it's not considered a bedroom in our determination of a, a bedroom, or bedroom like room. I believe some other counties have a requirement that has a closet to be qualified as a bedroom. The other part I wanna go over in the definition is the dwelling or dwelling units. Dwelling unit mean any habitable room or group of habitable rooms located within a dwelling and forming a single habitable unit with facilities, with facilities which are used or intended to be used for living, sleeping, cooking, and eating. So, that's just to support how, if a portion of room has two kitchens, then that's considered a dwelling. Some of the other notable sections of our rule is 1162 dash thirty-one point one A one in regards to residential developments. So, under that section, individual wastewater systems may be used as a temporary onsite means of wastewater disposal in lieu of wastewater treatment works under the following conditions. One other thing, one of the conditions is that there's at least ten thousand square feet of land area for each individual wastewater system. And the other is, the total water flow into one individual wastewater system shall not exceed one thousand gallons. And one individual wastewater system shall not serve more than five bedrooms, whether they are in one dwelling or one dwelling unit or two. So, that's the portion of the citation where saying the, IWS can only serve five bedrooms and no, and only two dwellings. The other part is in regards to 1162 dash thirty-one point one H in regards to IWS shall be an independent system. So, why I wanna point that out is, if you have a large property, you could have two houses on there, and you could have two IWSes serving the two dwellings. That citation would prevent having two separate septic tanks and then combining the two effluent from the tanks to one joint leach field. Each one has to have its own leach field. Section 1162 thirty-two in regards to Appendix D, Table Two, I just wanted to point out the setback requirements that's followed in regards to the design of a wastewater system. How it has to be five feet from the, from the house or nine feet from the property line and so forth. And the last part I wanted to point out, I think you were mentioning about concerns about groundwater affecting the absorption bed. Under 1162 dash thirty-three point one B six.
Which page, which page?
So, it, I believe the citation would be.
Say again, 1162 dash?
So, on page sixty-two dash fifty-eight.
Dash fifty-eight.
This one on the last attachment before that one. So, 1162 dash thirty-three point one B six. So, basically, it requires that there should be at least three feet separation from the bottom of the bed to the ground, high groundwater level. And if that's not being met, then our rules require that a variance, wastewater variance be pursued. And upon granting of the variance to allow for less than three feet separation, they would have to put a more advanced treatment, that is aerobic treatment unit with disinfection to, for their individual wastewater system. So, that pretty much concludes what I wanted to share with the county members.
I'm gonna open it up for questions. Councilman Kagawa?
Thank you, Mark, for coming. Yeah, kinda wish you Kawai person was here too. So, how, what is the average time you guys take? Seems pretty simple to answer Department Health side, whether the permit approved or not.
So, are you talking about the individual wastewater system review or the building permit review?
Both.
So.
Do we have Stefan Kawai to make it relatively quick?
Yeah, so we have Laurie Vedder. She's our Waste Water Branch Kawai engineer. So, she does the review. So, in terms of, say, a new development, if the IWS application is acceptable, she would approve it to construct and then sign off on the building permit or through the E-plans. So, that, you know, I don't really have a feel of how fast, but it shouldn't take too long. Maybe two weeks, two, a month, depending.
Next question. Getting kinda a lot of complaints about people wanting to do additions to the house and then finding out that it triggered the request for septic to be put in in order to do like something they claim that is irrelevant to more people occupying the house, whatever. But anyway, so, when that happens, do you, Stefan Kawai called him and tell him the reasoning why it triggered the septic tank?
Okay, so normally, there would be an application, right, associated with that? So, so that's going into the part where I opened up about the existing dwelling doing an alteration or addition. So, if the existing dwelling is connected to a cesspool. Okay, and if it's involving adding a bedroom, then they will have to upgrade.
So, even if that person already lived in the house, it does not matter that you added one bedroom. So, okay, we're gonna, we're gonna make you pay it off. So, exorbitant cost of putting in septic. Even though that person could be living in the same house, but you making a bedroom, maybe they have a kid. You know, I mean, I don't know, it's just. Basically, what to me is happening is you're shouting now affordable housing for local people. And when you trigger that, they're gonna say, ah, I'm not gonna build it, I cannot afford that. I cannot afford the septic plus the extension?
Yeah, I don't have those. I didn't bring the whole excerpts from the 1162, but we have a rule in there in regards to if you're adding a bedroom and it's being served, the house is being served by cesspool, you have to upgrade.
Okay, yeah, and I don't wanna shoot the message, I appreciate it, but just a lot of frustration on on that requirement, cause it's just the cost.
So, one thing I wanna point out though, there is a mandate to, by 2050, to eliminate cesspools. So, that kinda.
I know, but we all know that lot will happen. All the amount cesspools we get, they gonna force people for, for putting that money. They ain't gonna do it, and good luck to them.
I have a follow-up. Thank you, Councilman Kagawa. You bring up a really good one. I have a follow-up. So, Councilman Kagawa brought up a good point, right? People live in a house, wanna add a bedroom, they already live in there. You bring up a really good point, excellent point, that a bedroom means an extra person in the house, right? That's why you need an extra bedroom. But, could a local family apply for a bigger living room or a workshop room added to the house that's connected to cesspool?
Okay, so.
Let me finish, clarify a question. Simple yes and no would be good for the, for on record radio. You guys are telling us that a family cannot put a bedroom on a home because they have cesspool, cause it's gonna add another occupant to their home. Do you have a restriction if they wanna do a workshop room or extend the living room or put a bigger deck on their home? Because now it's not a bedroom.
Okay, so I wanna clarify that. It's not restricting that they cannot build, they would just have to upgrade the cesspool.
Why? You guys have an authority to make this local family upgrade from cesspool to septic when they're not doing the bedroom that's in your ordinance? You don't have an ordinance that a.
No, 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 okay, so.
Living room or deck.
So, my answer is in regards to adding a bedroom. They can add it, but they have to upgrade the cesspool.
What if they don't like add a bedroom? What if they like add a workshop? Living room or a knife?
Okay, so, in terms of expanding a living room, that wouldn't trigger the upgrade unless the cesspool is failing.
Perfect.
Okay, but the other part, the workshop.
Workshop or deck.
Okay, so that's the part I went in, in terms of the definition of bedroom. In terms of our broad definition, it could be considered a bedroom-like room, and that could trigger it.
Who, who gonna make the decision?
That's where we look at the.
Your office?
Yeah.
Your office, you're biased right now, cause you're telling me your definition of a bedroom has the window and seven, seventy square feet. But what if somebody say it's not a bedroom, I wanna put a workshop, saddle room, I wanna put a.
In terms of our definition, we don't look at what the label is. So, sometimes on the building plan, they call it an office. They call it some other room. But in terms of our definition, it's a bedroom-like room. So, same thing with a workshop. If they call it a workshop, they call it whatever else. Under our definition, it can be considered a bedroom or bedroom-like room.
And who makes that can-do decision? Your office?
Yeah, in regards to our review of the wastewater system, yeah.
I think it's a bias.
Yeah, that's why I wanted to point it out, that there's a discrepancy. And that's why I'm bringing it to the attention that. In terms of our interpretation, that's, I'm sorry, I'm bringing it up to notice to council member.
I, this isn't a follow-up, it's completely different direction. And I want to acknowledge that this requirement prohibits a lot of density in housing. But in saturated areas, we have issues that happen. With your permission, Committee Chair, can I give a little context to my question? So, what was very strident in the 2018 flood in Hiennah? But it happens in other areas. As we add density, and I'm seeing here on sixty-two dash forty-eight, you need at least ten thousand square feet of area to have a septic system. Still yet, if water is sitting pooled, a lot of these septic systems are actually above ground. They come up high, there's water standing around it. And as we get density of it, it just sits there and it becomes septic. People get staph infections. You have, I'm looking on your grid here, your Table Three on sixty-two dash D dash three. Does percolation rate, does that basically mean absorption rate or saturation rate? Is it the same word? Does it mean the same thing?
No, it's different. I provided that in regards to how you size the absorption bed. So, if you have a slower draining soil, you would need a bigger area for the bed. So, it's not like one size fits all. So, depending on your soil at the project site.
If I can just demonstrate the challenge that we had out there.
We have, we're gonna leave it to the question.
It definitely has a question. This is very much a question. We had standing water where I was going down with our engineering people, neighborhood, I mean, house to house. I'm seeing staff infections, babies with fevers, all kinds of problems. Five people who had existing illnesses, they didn't live through having the road opened. They died, not necessarily because they're living in a septic area, but I can't help imagine that it didn't hurt. Where is there, cause I'm trying to look here where we see any kind of limitation on that ten thousand square feet? Like if we're looking to see where they are relative to standing water. I see on sixty-two dash fifty-two, under Item One, they have to be two hundred feet from a shoreline perennial stream or wetland. But when you have, say, ten houses or fifteen houses within a certain area, especially downhill from big expensive houses pushing all their septic down, where do we look at that?
I think you're talking about a zoning issue, you know, in terms of developing the area. Unfortunately, sometimes some of these developments was done prior to our rule, you know, order subdivisions and so on. As far as our review, if an application comes in, we just look at the property. You know, we probably pointing out like flood zone areas and things. If they can construct on it, I mean, we cannot deny it. We don't have anything in our rules that prohibits a wastewater system in a flood zone, flooding.
Okay, so that's helpful for me. So, what I am hearing in this is planning doesn't have responsibility for it. Engineering doesn't have responsibility for it. Building doesn't have responsibility. I was told to ask my question to the Department of Health. So, my understanding is you don't have control over that either.
Right, the starting part would be, are you gonna allow the development in the flood zone?
And we obviously do, especially, yeah, on the continent, we obviously do.
We would need to take a caption break. I would like to.
He answered me, he answered me. They don't, nobody has control over what I'm asking to have a look at.
I still got a couple more. I would like to take a caption break. Would you still hang around and we can come back to you one more time? Or you have a plane that you have to catch?
I still have some time.
Thank you. I just have a couple more questions. We would like to take a caption break now. A ten-minute caption break. Be back by ten forty. Thank you.
I would like to call this meeting back to order. I believe we have Department of Health still on the chair. I had only a couple more questions before I would release you. Thank you. And sorry for the grueling questions, cause this is a hot topic. And I believe you might not have all the answers, but I appreciate you giving us the answers you can. You mentioned ten thousand square foot lot. A lot of our lots on Kawai are smaller than ten thousand square foot. If they have a cesspool and they need to convert to septic, will the Department of Health allow them to use the cesspool as a seepage pit? And then they can put their septic tank in, in a different hole and run the wastewater out of the septic into the cesspool as a seepage pit?
So, specifically in regards to your question, the answer would be no. But we would allow a seepage pit. But it would have to be one that complies with our rules regarding seepage pits.
Can you tell me, what is the definition of a seepage pit?
So, basically, it's generally a circular excavation with, say, concrete rings with perforation in it. Basically, from the septic tank, they're flowing, going to it and they're flowing in the seepage pit can laterally disperse out the excavation.
So, with that being said, why wouldn't a cesspool, old cesspool be equivalent to that if a cesspool with irrigation, concrete holes are embedded in that same circular hole that you are claiming they need to build?
So, one of the main issues is the way it was constructed. It may not have what we're requiring now in terms of the rings to basically support the cover of the seepage pit. I mean, right, it could be okay, but generally, it's not, probably not complying with our requirements for a seepage pit.
So, you said generally, it'll be okay, but probably not. Would you have an engineer go out there and look at it?
It might be, in terms of, that's where, if you don't touch it, it's okay. But once you start having to upgrade it, then it has to comply with our rules. And so, one thing too is, it's not just a hole. It has to be properly sized in regards to the amount of wastewater flow going into it. And so, that's a primary part, that whatever is there may not be in terms of our requirements for the design complying with the sizing of it.
But that same hole can be dug bigger or made smaller if need to fit complying to what you guys asking for in your engineering of a seepage pit? Cause like I said, there's a lot of local families with smaller lots that do not have a ten thousand square feet. They don't have a place to put a new seepage pit. Would you guys allow, if they're complying with their. Would you guys allow if they're complying with their cesspool becoming a convergent seepage pit to your ordinance, would you guys accept that?
So let me under, um, understand your question. You, you're saying the same footprint where the seepage pit is, you, and you want to, put in a seepage pit in complying with our rule for the same footprint? Or you asking to use the same one?
Footprint would, would be adjusted to your ordinance. Whatever you guys say needs to be done, the hole gotta be X amount of feet circular wide, circular deep, crush rock, whatever needs to happen. If they can turn that old cesspool into a ordinance compliant seepage pit, would you guys allow that since the lot has no place else?
We, we could, it's just that during that time, they, they cannot generate any wastewater, right?
Correct, no, I understand.
Okay, yeah.
Thank you for that. And then the last thing I, I wanted to touch, touch bases on was, um, since we did talk about rain catchment and our water department did say that they don't govern rain catchments, does the Department of Health govern rain catchments?
Okay, so that's a question outside of our wastewater branch scope. But, you know, I cannot officially address that question, but my understanding is, um, depending on how they, they use that rain catchment, um, I, I'm hearing different talks about rain catchment to serve the subdivision. And so, um, as far as like having that for fire, you're going to have a separate line for fire or are you going to combine it with the portable water in terms of the, the fire hydrants so that?
No. The question would be if a home, single family resident home, put a rain catchment to do the bathing, to do whatever irrigation they need, possibly not even to drink, they would buy the bottled water to drink. Would Department of Health have to monitor that safety of that tank?
Um, so that kind of falls into the plumbing code. That's not really our part. The plumbing code would probably prohibit. So if it's just, you have a catchment, um, and it's being just used by, uh, one dwelling, uh, from my understanding, you know, um, the Department of Health wouldn't regulate, but if you still have like several service connections from that, then it could start.
No, you did answer my question. I really appreciate it. I have no more questions for you. Thank you. Thank you for coming from Oahu.
Thank you.
Okay. I would like to call this meeting back to order. Now I would like to invite any public testimony in the audience that would like to provide testimony. Mr. Hart, you know the routine? You got three minutes, green light, yellow light, tell you thirty seconds, red light means you're done. State your name for the record. Thank you.
For the record, Bruce Hart. You know, this isn't by way of complaining, uh, Mr. DeCosta, but there's a lot for me to address. I have to address every single department that got up here. And also I'll try and go through as fast as I can. Building, the building process, I'd like to see discussion about a threshold. The building process is, my understanding is the same as whether I'm going to build some small addition to my carport, which is addresses me personally, or whether I'm going to build a whole house, a brand new house, or I'm going to add a bedroom. I'd like to see a, a discussion about a threshold. If it's a small project, maybe we can just bypass and people can add something, you know, without having to go through the entire process. And then you had a discussion with planning about substandard roads and there are a lot of substandard roads. And I would like to see parking addressed. I, you, you know, is anybody ever going to address the parking issue? I mean, we got people using cul-de-sacs as parking lots. Okay? Okay, and then you've got up to the current and the one you're, we're all really interested in, and that's the cesspools. And it's true. Just like Mr. Kagawa said, what are you going to do? It's going to come twenty fifty. And they're really, I mean, if I'm around, that's going to be a year. Because people are not going to be able to address this cesspool issue. And then you got the issue you talked about, you, you've talked about in the past, are you ever going to do sewers? And are we going to have people forced into cess, uh, septics? And then a year later, two years later, three years later, they're going to put in sewers? People aren't going to be able to afford it and they're really going to be upset. Ten thousand square feet? I live on a street that none of these people are going to be able to put in septics because they haven't got the room. What are they going to do? Tear down their house and put in a septic? It's almost humorous, but it isn't humorous. All right? Thank you.
You have another opportunity for three minutes after we check. Is anybody else would like, anybody more in the audience would like to testify? Okay, we've seen none. Mr. Hart, you have another three minutes if you want to.
It won't take three minutes, but all the issues that you've talked about, the one that's costing the most is the issue of wastewater. And, um, I have spoken to Ms. Federer and she's a very nice person and she's very knowledgeable. And this gentleman is too. But one of the things that wasn't mentioned though is that not all the cesspools are going to comply. The reason being, and they know this, the health department knows, so each individual property owner can find out, that when they dug the hole for their cesspool, not all of them met the water table requirement. Now, it was interesting for me to check my street that right there, this one, it met the water table requirement and the house right next door doesn't. You would think that if one, the one next to it probably would, but that's not the way it works out. And so you have a cesspool that the percolation, if you want to call it that, I don't know if it's the proper word, is that the water table is actually up higher than the house right next door. The house right next door will meet that water requ, uh, table requirement. And maybe this gentleman can explain it to you, but it has, doesn't seem to me it's random. So if it doesn't meet the water table requirement, it triggers a septic automatically. If you want to add, you want to have some addition, you want to do anything, if you're, if the water table requirement isn't there, it doesn't. Thank you.
Without seeing no other testifiers in the audience, I would like to call this meeting back to order. Members, any final discussion? Councilmember Kagawa, followed by councilmember Cowan, and then down the line.
Thank you, uh, thank you, Chair, for having this item. Um, appreciate all of those, uh, agencies that showed up and, uh, gave us a good education and the public a good education on, you know, what entails into the whole permit process, especially for single family housing. Um, just, you know, again, number one item for, for me complaint is how do we provide affordable housing for our kids? And the kids, uh, and their kids, you know, sorry, grandkids, um, they live in a different world from us. You know, when I was young, you could buy a house, you know, in Leuui and afford it. Today, you have to have a lot of help. So, I mean, how do we help curious, it's like things as well, I'm really Mr. Tomo Mitsu about, you know, these, um, requirements to, um, upgrade to septic when you have a functional sewer, uh, cesspool. So, I mean, you know, why, right? Trying to help our kids stay here, live here, afford to live here, save for that, um, single family house of their dreams. And, and, um, when we have no options except keep paying more and more and more, when our house values are already through the roof, you know, it's, it's frustrating. It's frustrating our, our water hook, water hookup costs, our sewer hookup costs, requirements to convert to, you know, septic. I mean, it's just before you even, I mean, before you even build anything, it just, it just gives the answers to them that are struggling, no. You know, more options, Kauai. And it's frustrating. And, you know, I think it's incumbent upon us, the council here, to, um, to start with pushing for legislation that'll ease somebody's restrictions. And we want to be very involved this legislative session in trying to get rid of that, uh, requirement for septic. If we're going to wait to twenty fifty and that's to me is just a dream idea unless the federal government and state government really puts money behind that dream, significant monies behind that dream, it will never happen. And why restrict affordable housing for local residents? Because we, we're basing all of our hopes on this dream that is not funded by either government. So I think, you know, um, again, just, we got to do our part to help our local families because they're really at a point in time where they questioning whether Hawaii is the place for them. We're the only island state in the nation. The laws that apply to us do not help us. They help the, the main forty-eight, forty-nine states. Because Alaska is a lot huger than Hawaii, a lot more room to do things. Well, we're required to comply with federal EPA and, uh, Clean Water Acts and we're island state. And, and we're most popular destination for any American to want to live here. This is what we have. So we need to, um, somehow do things different because we're, we're the only island state and we, um, yeah, we need much better for our people, for our local people. We're going to lose everybody. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Councilmember Kagawa. Councilmember Cowan, followed by Councilmember Bulasun.
All right. I want to appreciate Councilmember Kagawa because you got to the jugular of the problem, right? It is so expensive for people to be have, able to have access to the infrastructure to be able to have a home. So I recognize and support what you're saying. I thank you, Councilmember DeCosta, for putting this on the table for us to look at and understand what are the barriers to building. Um, and so I appreciate all of that and I appreciate the opportunity to look and listen because if we set policy, it's helpful for us to see where the problems are. So what I saw as some of the challenges that we council need to help and legislature is the siloing of responsibility. I think like when I gave the example of, in the opposite end of what you're talking about, when people are literally living in standing water infiltrated with septic situation, um, it's, it's life threatening and life taking for those who are vulnerable. And it seems like nobody has that responsibility to be able to be addressing either geologic differences or zoning differences, whether it's how we do our building codes or our property taxes. We don't have the same conditions across the entire island. And I think that's very important. Something I heard from, uh, the water department that I really appreciated a lot was hearing about, uh, the per fixture idea instead of just necessarily a facilities reserve charge. Because, and the question that you had about the size of the meter, I will look at monster houses with pools and fountains and everything, you know? And then when they're basically paying the same facilities reserve charge as an old house with a widow who is rarely probably impacts anything. You know, we have the same sewer cost if they, usually those big houses don't have a sewer, but they, whatever way, we have a real disparity. And so, uh, I think, like, I like the idea of, um, the fixturing maybe. I mean, I, I believe that it's really incumbent upon the council and the legislature to look at what is working and what is not. And I have been so focused as committee chair for public safety about how we keep ourselves from hazards, burning, all those different elements. So again, I'm coming back to the water department when we're looking at our fire flow protection. Because when there is no fire flow protection, I know we can have the sprinklers. I appreciated your question on the water tanks. I know Waipaa put one in not very long ago. It was very expensive, by the way, a couple, few million dollars, I think. But we saw in our own county building, that sprinkler went off at the wrong time. So that was a whole fresh disaster, right? So, um, how do we, how do we fix these issues? Um, so again, thank you all for bringing this to the table, for bringing up the, the key issues and how do we pay the bills as a county? And how do we allow our people who are working hard to have a home? So thank you to all of you who came and listened to me.
Councilmember Bulasun?
Thank you. Uh, mahalo, Councilmember DeCosta for bringing this to the table, putting this on our briefing. And thank you all, our presenters today. Um, it was very informative, allowing me to fully understand a lot of the processes that, questions, and I think our community, um, you know, a lot of these things, uh, you don't, until you go through the process, you don't really understand. And for the people who are interested in learning to do this for your property or looking into these things, I hope you are able to look at this. Um, Councilmember Kagawa basically said everything I wanted to say. So I'm just going to echo that and thank everyone for the opportunity to learn.
Councilmember Kabalio? Just want to say mahalo to all of our departments for coming and presenting. This discussion has been ongoing for so many, but I see that there's an effort here, the two team effort from the federal, state, counties, not just the counties. There's all these different tiers that needs to be addressed. And then at the same time, want to make sure our county team has the resources they need to make things happen. So we got to really look at every step of the way and I appreciate Councilmember DeCosta bringing it to the, to the floor for this healthy discussion from the different departments. And everybody has their own responsibility, but how you tie it all in and, so all of that. But the bottom line is the funding, the resources that is, will be needed and the support, the staffing, whatever need to make sure that we can hit every single one of them. Because at the end of the day, it is about our kids, our children, my grandchildren, our children, all, all of that, families, housing, businesses, you know, moving forward, but more with the housing part. And I think this was a great discussion now and we look forward to holding everybody at the table and to really follow through on some of the good discussion pieces that we have right before us and then take it to the next level. And so I appreciate the discussion, mahalo again, and really look forward to taking it one step at a time, but at the same time, looking at the big picture and being ready so we can secure resources and information that we need so we can move forward. And so appreciate the discussion, mahalo.
Councilmember Kuli, followed by Council Chair Raposa.
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, I'm not on this committee, but I do appreciate you, Chair, putting this forward. I think we all learned a lot and it's good information for our public, for the public as well. Um, I won't repeat anything, but I'll just add that I'm looking forward to seeing what the, um, Water Commission comes up with as far as allowing, um, water catchment. And thank you to everyone who came today to provide the information. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Thank you, everybody, uh, for being here and getting this on the agenda. You know, I think Ross hit the nail on the head in so many ways. Uh, it, it's how do we incentivize building of affordable housing for local residents? That's the question. How do we simplify the process? How do we make it easier? Um, I was just, as the others were talking, I was, I was just jotting some numbers. Septic system where I live, it's about forty grand. And it's actually higher if you go to Koloa Poi Pu area. It can go up to a hundred grand because of a blue rock that they got to blast. Eight hundred square foot house right now, you know, three hundred square feet, uh, three hundred bucks a square foot is probably what we pay. And it's even upwards of that. So that's two hundred forty thousand. You get the water resource, uh, I mean, the reserve fee. You got taxes, you got bringing in electricity, bringing in all of these utilities. It's just cannot be done. The system that we have today will not incentivize someone like me to put an extra house in my backyard to potentially rent to a, a, a local family. I can't afford it. Can't afford it. So something's wrong, yeah? We talk about affordable housing, affordable, we have, you know, a lot of the funding come to our counties is because of, uh, for the, for the low income and, and the very low income. But, you know, for the professional people working, the, the, the normal people working out here, there's nothing for them. Nothing. And when we look at seven hundred thousand dollars, uh, as. And when we look at seven hundred thousand dollars as, as a reason or as a affordable house cost, then we're not in the right ball field. We're not. That's a lot of money. So, so the question is, how do we, how do we improve the process? How do we improve our permitting? How do we prove our regulations so that, right now, because it is a crisis? I mean, if you watch the news, last night, there was an amazing forum on TV about the Lahaina fires and the, and the rebuilding of Lahaina. And I got to tell you, my heart was broken listening to those local people share their, their problems that they have. And the state and the county and the federal government, I mean, they got to get together and help these people build homes. Now, what happened in Mauna was a, was a tragedy, the worst tragedy I've ever seen. But not, not talking about those that lost their lives, but those that lost their properties that woke up, fled their house, and found out that their houses were gone is no different, in my opinion, than some family that gets the letter that says, "You got to move in forty-five days because I'm selling the house." So now you have a family, it's not as devastating as a fire, but the, the, the outcome is the same. You have a homeless family, a houseless family. You have all these dollars that are being funneled. What's the difference? I mean, we, we got to start helping our local people, otherwise they're going to be going away. Billy and I were just having this discussion the other day, pretty emotional. His two kids on the mainland, my two kids on the mainland, they cannot live here. How can we be proud as leaders, as decision-makers, to sit up here and, how can we be proud and say we're doing a great job when our local kids are leaving? And a lot of it is because of regulation and because of permitting that we have going on right now. Because of the delays, because of all of these things that have been going on for decades. So I'm not proud. I'm embarrassed when I got to see a family pack up and leave, because I've been here for so doggone long. Although in the legislative side, we have never been able to, to solve that problem, because we have chosen not to. That, that's a choice we make, right? That's a choice that we make if we want to help solve this crisis. And, and we have, we've chosen not to. And that is where the change got to happen. You know, this whole cesspool, septic, now, Ross, forty grand, fifty grand for a septic. Now, this county, to my knowledge, has not even put out a sewer plant. Where we going next? We know Kikaha needs sewer, we need Nautia needs sewer. We don't, Wailea House last where I live that is close to the pumping station, and we should be able to just put the sewer. Yes, it costs money, so we stay away from it. Oh, no, it's too much. It's always too much. Unless it's an amenity that the government wants to build, then we find the money. But I know, Ross, you're talking about going to legislature. One of the things we're going to look at, if your area is in a area that's going to be sewerized, I don't know if that's the right word, sewerized in the next fifteen years or twenty years, then you should be exempt from putting a septic. Why do they make you pay a hundred grand, or eighty grand, or seventy-five grand, knowing that in a few years, you're going to go dig up more money for one sewer? You know, I mean, I understand the environmentalists, the septic tank is only, this is your cesspool, this is your septic.
Yep.
This is your cesspool, this is your septic. It's not much better. And it's not going to be long before the environmentalists win that battle and say, "No more septics." So we, we got to start thinking about the local people. We got to start thinking about how we're going to protect that person. You don't like somebody lose their house because they cannot convert. How you going to punish them? You're going to turn off the water. I cannot afford to change. I cannot afford to put one septic. What you going to do? What we going to do? We going to paddle off the toilet? Seriously, what we going to do? What's the penalty? We going to fine you ten thousand dollars a day? You cannot even pay for the septic, you cannot pay ten thousand dollars a day in a fine. So it's wonderful, it looks good, it makes the environmentalists feel really good. Yeah, we can finally get rid of cesspools, but the reality is, how are these people going to pay? How many cesspool, uh, septic tank contractors are there on the island that can put up all these septic tanks in twenty forty-nine? Yeah, if we're not doing sewers. So anyway, I guess my point, my vent is, we got to start doing things differently. We got to start doing things legislatively, border water. They got to look at different things to make it easier for our local people to stay here. I guess that's all I'm saying. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, councilmembers. A very fruitful discussion. Um, I want to start, Councilmember Kagawa, you know, he spoke first, he said it all. We all diddled behind him. And, and the bottom line is this, you guys, the reason why this went on the agenda was because you all know the sunshine law, we're not allowed to have these kind of discussions as a group. And also, I really wanted to showcase the good job of our EPR, of our electronic pen review system having place, and, and our building division, Public Works, doing a good job as far as permitting and moving it through. But you all learned today, there's many other entities that go along with this process. So for the record, I'm going to state what we had learned today. On record, we had learned that the Department of Health has no monitoring over a rain catchment system. That if somebody on Kauai wanted to put a rain catchment system in, they would monitor their own chlorine levels and their own safety levels in the rain catchment. Whether they use it as a plumbing for their bathroom, their new shower, and they buy potable drinking water. But we learned today that the Department of Health does not monitor rain catchments. Department of Water, we had learned today, on record, that Department of Water cannot refuse a permit for building if they would like to have rain catchment in an area where you guys, water, already serve potable water. It is to the discretion of the homeowner if they would like to put rain catchment on it. You guys don't have the right not to sign that permit. We've also learned that on the cesspool conversion, you need ten thousand square feet on your lot if you would like to upgrade from cesspool to septic. Otherwise, you cannot upgrade. What we going to do if your lot is smaller than ten thousand square feet? We going to add that family to the homeless list? No, we not. Do you know why people are so interested in this council? And this is what I heard, people are watching the TV more and more, because they say the seven of us have common sense and have common kindness in our heart, because we do what is right for the people. So when I look at this, I ask the Department of Health, can the cesspool be used as a sewage pit? And according to Department of Health, they said on record that as long as it follows their ordinance to that pit size, that it can be used. So for you homeowners out there, on record, you can use your cesspool as a sewage pit just due to ordinance that they have in place to convert the size, the circular circumference, the water table, and your cross rocking site. Water Department, on record, five-eighths meter costs the same for a three-bedroom, eight hundred ADU as it does for a five thousand square foot mansion down Pukulela. Let's do something about that, you guys. On record, Water Department stated that to convert from a five-eighths meter to a three-fourths meter is seven thousand dollars. I asked, on record, if that material cost or labor cost is fixed in. I did not get an answer, but according to what they told me, was there was a fixed rate that they came up with. It doesn't reflect the cost of a meter or the labor cost to put the meter in. I'm going to do a cost analysis and find out what is the cost of a five-eighths meter and how much labor hours take to excavate, put the meter in, and cover it whole. I think our local families deserve to only pay that much. I looked in at three local guys sitting on the bottom of Water Department. Mr. Hinazumi and Mr. Kagimori, he both local boys, born and raised here, all your friends that you went high school with, struggling with this price. You know how I noticed? Because one of our decorated officers came to me, who's building a additional dwelling underneath his house, an officer who protects us. He was advised to use his second water meter. His property can have two water meters. You guys, Department of Water, advise him to hook up the second water meter to the downstairs unit. That means he could never build his second home, and he got two children. So one of you in the Water Department was kind enough, because that's the lesson I promoted today, kind heart, was kind enough to tell him, "There's a little loophole, you don't have to use your second meter. You go put one pump, you put a bigger-sized meter, and for seven grand, you can save your second meter for your second home, and you can enclose your downstairs kitchen." You know what? We should have done even better. We should have do the, do a cost per meter and labor cost to that, and give that officer a break. Because that's the guy that is part of our community. And with closing, I would like to say, on record, the excavation process and the one-day review, you guys, there's a lot of million-dollar homes being built in areas that we have mom-and-pop houses below, because they cannot build on the hill. Remember, all that roof size, all that concrete, all that excavation going to bring the rain right down to where a mom-and-pop is. And closing, I would like to tell all you guys some new information, it's going to make you excited, that you can learn from me today, because I had learned it. Mr. Hart said he needs a better process, because it seems like sheds and all other dwellings have the same process. Well, it doesn't. A two-hundred-foot shed does not, does not need a permit. You can build a two-hundred-square-foot shed, ten by twenty, on your property that does not need a permit. You could build two ten-by-twenty sheds next to each other, as long as the roofs don't connect and touch. And they can even overlap, but as long as they don't touch, you can have now a shed that's a twenty by twenty or twenty by four. And we'd last been said, we talked about a lot of building permits, but I want to thank our building division, our Public Works, for coming here today. I want to thank everybody in the audience for being here today, and this was a great process. Thank you. I would like to call this meeting, uh, the final decision. The motion on the floor is to receive, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any leades, motion is carried. Seeing no further business and hearing no objections, Public Works and Veteran Services Committee meeting is now adjourned.
I'd like to call the Parks and Recreation Transportation Committee meeting to order. Let the record reflect, all members are present. Please read the first item.
Minutes of the November twenty-second, two, twenty-two-three, Parks and Recreation Transportation Committee meeting.
Do you have a motion? Motion moved by Councilmember Kagawa.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Cowden. Any discussion, any testimony in the committee? No testimony, no discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Can I get the second item, please?
PRT two-zero-two-three dash zero-four, Communication from Councilmember Kagawa, requesting the presence of the Director of Parks and Recreation to provide an update on the status of the Hana Pippa soccer field and of tennis and pickleball courts islandwide, to include but not be limited to the status of the wind screens, surface repair, and any temporary improvements.
Stop proof?
Second.
Oh, wait, receive, I'm sorry. Receive.
Moved by Councilmember Kagawa, and second by Councilmember Cowden. Uh, for today's discussion, I'll hand it over for Councilmember Kagawa to do a presentation, and then we'll have, uh, who's to set the rules, bring up our-